I'm going to call the city council meeting of April 21st, 2015 to order. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Here.
Petty. Kennett.
Here.
Shopmar.
Here.
Latour. Long.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Marsh.
Here.
Mayor Jordan. Here. Would you join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. Okay, the first order of business is that we have an item that's going to be pulled from the consent agenda, and that's item number eight, which is the Garver contract. Resolution to authorize a professional engineering services group, Garver LLC, for on-call engineering services for the airport in an amount not to exceed $20,000 and to approve a budget adjustment. That item is going to be pulled on, be the first order of new business, correct? So y'all will let me-
First order of business, mayor.
First order right after consent.
That's what I meant. Did I say new business? Mm-hmm. Well, that's why y'all need to watch me. Okay. Number one, on consent, approval of the April 7th, 2015, City Council Meeting minutes. Number two, a resolution to approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $15,225 representing donation revenue to animal services for the fourth quarter of 2014. Number three, a resolution to award bid number 15-21 to authorize the purchase of bulk oils and lubricants from Frost Oil Company, van bearing in variable amounts and for varying unit prices as needed for a term of one year from the date of award with the option to renew for four additional one-year terms. All right. Number four, resolution to award bid number 15-26 to authorize a one-year contract with crews, uniforms, and equipment incorporated in the amount of $15,387.60 with four consecutive one-year renewal options for the purchase of uniforms for the Fayetteville Fire Department. Number five, a resolution, amend resolution number 162-10 to revise site plan for the remainder of Lyrie Lane subdivision by reducing the number of single-family lots to ten and by reconfiguring the public access location to the natural park area. Number six, a resolution to authorize a contract with Casco Industries Incorporated for the purchase of variable amounts of replacement puncture gear for the Fayetteville Fire Department for the unit prices of $1,165 for structural firefighting personnel protective coats and $850 for structural firefighting personnel protective pants on an as-needed basis through March 9th, 2018 pursuant to a cooperative bid process to the city of Springdale. Number seven, a resolution to approve a contract with Electrolink Incorporated to RFE 13-11 for the purchase and installation of an access control panel for City Hall and development services in the total amount of $69,634.30 to authorize a 10% project contingency in the amount of $6,963.43 and to approve a budget adjustment. Number eight has been pulled and would be for first order of business after the consent. Number nine, a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with the University of Arkansas for placement of a university-owned gas service line within the city of Fayetteville right of way. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent-
Second.
We have a motion in the second to accept the consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, the first order of business after the consent is this resolution, resolution to authorize professional engineering services group with the Garver LLC for engineering services for the airport and to approve task order number one for on-call engineering and surveying services for the airport in the amount of not to exceed $20,000 and to approve a budget adjustment.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. As a way of introduction, I don't know if I've met every single one of you personally, but I'm Johnny Roscoe. I'm the airport director down at Drakeville, so thank you for the continuing support you give to the airport throughout the year. The reason that item was pulled, mayor and council, was that originally when it went through to consent, the package included the original contract we had on with Garver, who was our newest engineering firm voted by committee several weeks ago. The FAA requires we have a civil engineering firm on contract to advise us over a five-year period. The task order is what was read into consent, and that was an on-call contract for up to $20,000 worth of on-call work with Garver, similar to what they have with the waterworks department. So what we'd like entered in as new business is the contract, which brings Garver on board as our civil engineering firm, as well as the task order for the on-call $20,000 on-call work.
And that's exactly what we did. We revised the resolution to include both of the items as requested by the airport, and that's what was given to you initially by our city clerk when she emailed that out to you, and you now have a copy of that in front of you, and so we would need a motion to amend to the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to amend to the resolution presented. Any discussion on that? Any public comment on that? Bring it back to the council. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to pass the resolution, sorry.
Thank you, mayor.
Any public comment on that? All right, bring it back to the council. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to pass the resolution, sorry.
Thank you, mayor.
Any public comment on that? All right, bring it back to the council. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to pass the resolution, sorry.
Thank you, mayor.
Any public comment on that? All right, bring it back to the council. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to pass the resolution, sorry.
Thank you, mayor.
Any public comment on that? All right, bring it back to the council. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to pass the resolution, sorry.
Thank you, mayor.
Any public comment on that? All right, bring it back to the council. I just wish the council to leave it on second reading. Everybody good with that?
Aye.
Okay. All right, number two, an ordinance to amend 72.03, parking prohibited in certain places of the Fayetteville Code by enacting a new subsection to prohibit parking on a city street in front of and blocking a mailbox. I'll entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, the first order of business after the consent is this resolution, resolution to authorize professional engineering services group with the Garver LLC for engineering services for the airport and to approve task order number one for on-call engineering and surveying services for the airport in the amount of not to exceed $20,000 and to approve a budget adjustment.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. As a way of introduction, I don't know if I've met every single one of you personally, but I'm Johnny Roscoe. I'm the airport director down at Drakeville, so thank you for the continuing support you give to the airport throughout the year. The reason that item was pulled, mayor and council, was that originally when it went through to consent, the package included the original contract we had on with Garver, who was our newest engineering firm voted by committee several weeks ago. The FAA requires we have a civil engineering firm on contract to advise us over a five-year period. The task order is what was read into consent, and that was an on-call contract for up to $20,000 worth of on-call work with Garver, similar to what they have with the waterworks department. So what we'd like entered in as new business is the contract, which brings Garver on board as our civil engineering firm, as well as the task order for the on-call $20,000 on-call work.
And that's exactly what we did. We revised the resolution to include both of the items as requested by the airport, and that's what was given to you initially by our city clerk when she emailed that out to you, and you now have a copy of that in front of you, and so we would need a motion to amend to the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to amend to the resolution presented. Any discussion on that? Any public comment on that? Bring it back to the council. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to pass the resolution, sorry.
Thank you, mayor.
Any public comment on that? All right, bring it back to the council. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to pass the resolution, sorry.
Thank you, mayor.
Any public comment on that? All right, bring it back to the council. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to pass the resolution, sorry. Thank you, mayor. Any public comment on that?
All right, bring it back to the council. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to pass the resolution, sorry.
Thank you, mayor.
Any public comment on that? All right, bring it back to the council. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second.
Motion second to pass the resolution, sorry.
Thank you, mayor.
Any public comment on that? All right, bring it back to the council. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second. Motion second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second. Motion second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business-
Now we need a motion to actually pass the resolution.
I move.
Second. Motion second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
No.
Okay.
It's left on the second reading, then.
Okay. Is that the end of business on this end?
Well, y'all can talk some more on if you want to.
Yeah, sure. I'm not against the, I want to say that I'm not against the intention of the ordinance, but I think that it's going a little too far in terms of its enforcement. I think a $70 fine is excessive for this violation. I'm fine with it being a violation on the books. So I'd like to make a motion for an amendment. This would just add two sentences at the end of the current section. First, it would say the penalty for the first two offenses shall be limited to a warning. And second, we'll say the penalty for an offense should be limited to $25.
Second.
Maybe there's a better way of wording that. I'll defer to the attorney.
Since we're leaving it on the second reading, I would suggest if you're going to have different penalties for this particular subsection in this larger section, which is already covered in the penalty provision, that we need to have a brand-new section just for this so that we don't get confused that parts, some of this section is punished by one way and some by the other, some have to have warnings and some don't. I'll be happy to work with you, and I would prefer that we just leave it on the second reading and let me work with Alderman and Petty to bring up an amendment that would probably be an entirely new section and not just a part of an existing section where the penalty provision is already spelled out in the code.
I'm fine with me. I withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you. That's a question. Let's find that. Yes.
So you, so the first offense, basically a warning and then $25 after that?
The first two offenses.
First two.
Call it a three-strike rule.
Oh. So the first two are warnings?
Yes, sir.
Well, you're going to be working with the city attorney on this. Are we? And then the third is $25?
Yes.
Making sure.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
So the, is the goal there then to put something together and then give us in the public time before the next meeting to see what it is and- I think it can go public as soon as the attorney has the draft ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so, maybe this is a question for the attorney. So what happens if that person says, "Well, it's worth $25 for me to park here, so I'm just going to keep parking." What happens on four and five and six and seven?
You don't need to ask me. You need to ask the sponsor of this.
Because I can hear some people saying that. "I need a parking place. I'm going to park here. I've got $25."
Sure.
So what are we going to do?
Make the same argument about any amount. I think we'll take a look at the paid- No, that's not part of this particular statute. However, uh, it, it should be, uh, uh, denoted according to another section.
That's what I'm thinking.
We're, we are, uh, at this point, gonna probably bring forward a section, uh, that's more, that'll explain that a little bit better. But obviously, uh, uh, there has to be proper notice, uh, before, uh, someone can be held in violation. Although, uh, you know, if you're blocking a hydrant or, or you're, you're blocking somebody's driveway, there's no curb to, to paint there. And yet, I don't think there'd be any problem with the fact that you could get a ticket because in fact, you are, you know, breaking the law and the law is, been put on, the code is on the internet, as well as of course, the cer- city clerk has copies of the code. And, and there is a presumption that people know the law, just like any of the state laws. Uh, there's not always signs up saying you can't burgle somebody's house, but you're gonna get penalized if you do.
Mayor, I might add for Alderman, Kenyon, uh, we do plan to bring a revision to the council.
Yes, we do.
Uh, that leaves the traffic super, then, the opportunity to may mark streets. There are parts of town that we do that currently around the university, for instance, so that we have turning radiuses for our solid waste divisions. We paint those curbs yellow, we do red painting next to fire hydrants. So in some areas, we do it, but we don't mark the distance from a stop sign on every street within the city. So we're gonna, uh, change the code, which will take.
Good. Because I just, I, I can only imagine that we're going out to paint a yellow curb on every mailbox throughout the city.
That's right.
This is what inspired us, Alderman, Kenyon, when, when I saw that code section. It, I was like you, I was coming, it's time to pull your hair out if we're gonna go forward with that, so.
Yeah, very inspirational indeed.
Yes, they are.
Okay. I just, I didn't know if we needed to clarify it in this section, but it's, obviously you're working on it and I look forward to that revision.
One more question, Chief, if I can ask. Um, has, has anybody asked the postal service, do they have a law? I was, I was under the impression there was a federal law of some sort, but there's not?
Not that we can find. I think that the postal service has their own internal rule that just tells the, the postal workers, if the mailbox is blocked, you're not obligated to leave the mail. But we couldn't find any kind of city ordinance, state law, or federal law that prohibited that.
And Alderman, Lieutenant, I'll confirm that I actually spoke with the postmaster here in town, that is the case.
I, I kind of assumed we would, I just wanted to make sure we said that out loud.
I actually thought it was a federal law and it's not, so.
It's not like parking in front of a fire hydrant. I mean, it's, 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 there's not a law, I guess. I did have somebody in one neighborhood tell me that they got a note from their, uh, delivery, mail delivery person who couldn't get in front of it for a couple of days, and so they actually left a note on the door.
They do.
Don't know whose car that is, but this is why you're not getting your mail. But you can't expect them always to do that, so.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Anything else? All right. What public comment do we have on this? None?
Here's one.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, come on.
Mr. Mayor, good to see you. My name is Lorraine O'Neil. I live at two thou- three thousand one West Weddington. And, uh, I know y'all have given this a lot of discussion, and I've heard some of it, and it's, it's reasonable, but in, in my view, it seems to me like we're on the fast track to pass an ordinance prohibiting every little infraction in the city without making an attempt to first resolve it at the neighborhood level. And I think if neighbors would just talk to each other, they could resolve this themselves. We cannot pass laws prohibiting every single little infraction that occurs in our society. That's just unrealistic, and I think this is unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Peter Tonison, thirty-five hundred Hearthstone Drive. Um, I did see in the Gazette Telegraph, there was an article about this ordinance, and they mentioned that the postal service doesn't have a rule, and they're the federal government and they're the people delivering the mail. And I, I just wanna kinda echo what the lady just said. It, it, if, is this the same fine that you'd have for parking in front of a fire hydrant? Seventy dollars plus twenty-five? It is. So, I mean, that's a much more serious matter, and that's something that I think everybody knows from the first day he drives or she drives, you don't park in front of fire hydrants and you don't block people's driveways. This to me is, it just seems, again, disproportionate. I think at a prior city council meeting, the chief was not in favor of this kind of ordinance. I don't know if the police would wanna have another excuse to stop people or run plates, but it just seems like, maybe like a, a plastic surgeon should sometimes tell the patient, "No." I mean, it's just a little too much surgery, it's a little too intrusive, it's more than what the city needs to do. Even if you say there were a hundred complaints, it's still only one out of a thousand people making a complaint, and it just seems to me a, a little bit overwrought. But I don't think it's immoral, and I don't think it's wrong. I, I just have to question whether the city council is gonna legislate on everything that everybody does anywhere in the city, 'cause you're talking about one minute delivery versus nine hours of parking, and, and there is a proportionality issue here. And, and I think it should either be a lower fine than a fire hydrant, or raise the fine for a hu- fire hydrant, 'cause that's a very serious matter of public safety. But I, I don't see this. This is more a matter of public courtesy, or even personal courtesy.
Thank you.
Hi, Laura Phillips, two zero five five South Klein. I did think I'd talk again. But it's not, it's not a frivolous thing. If you have disabled or elderly or incapacitated neighbors and they can't get to their mailbox because somebody has parked in front of it, that's a reasonable thing to make allowances for and make a rule for. I didn't know you couldn't do that, but I live on a one-way street, a dead-end street, and sometimes people park kind of in my driveway or kind of in front of my mailbox. And it would be nice to be able to, instead of just keep saying, "Hey, could you not do that?", have some power behind it and make, there's a rule. It's not just a, "Hey, could ya?", it's, it's a thing, it's a rule, it's a law we have. And that's sometimes the difference between getting a card from your grandchildren, or your social security money, or the coupons that you're depending on. It's, that's a humanity thing. We don't know these people's situation, and it's our job to make sure that they can get to their mailbox. It shouldn't be an issue. I don't understand why it's an issue, but it's a reasonable fine. You don't park in front of a fire hydrant so that we can put out the fire at their house, you don't park in front of their mailbox so they can get their cards from their grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us on this? Okay, I'm gonna bring you back to the council.
Maybe we should go to the second, third reading? Excuse me.
Oh, did you want?
I, I, yeah, I just wanted to say two things real quick, and just to address a couple of things, um, Justin, you brought up the complaint, the complaint-driven portion of it, and, and we did look at that. I, I specifically wondered if we could write it into the ordinance to be complaint-driven, but we can't really have selective enforcement, even though most of the codes in Fayetteville are complaint-driven, um, without saying they're complaint-driven. We enforce a lot of things that way. Um, and someone made the point of, you know, how critical it is, but one of the complaints I received from a constituent was a ninety-something-year-old man, and he was trying to get his medicine out of his mailbox. And that was one of the reasons I went forward with this, because I, I feel that's kind of urgent. Um, you know, one day may be too late. And the person who wrote the letter to us, um, her name's Sarah from Crystal Springs, um, she talked to me about wanting to talk to her neighbors, but having something to show them when she did. So, those are just a few points I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Okay. Now, Adella, you wanted?
I, I agree, uh, yes, I'll, I'll make a motion, but I, I agree. I think, um, for us to just act like it's a frivolous, uh, thing is, um, not exactly right. I've always been told that it was, um, against the federal law to use the mailbox for anything other than our official mail. And from time to time, people will say, "I'll come by your house and leave something there in your mailbox." Well, I've been told that that is not supposed to happen. And, and so, I think it is, I think our, our mailbox is a very important thing, and I hadn't even thought about the medicine, but there are a lot of folks who get their, their medicine through the mail, so that is important. So, I just, I feel like this is an important ordinance for us to have in the city to protect our citizens.
Okay.
Now, are you making a motion?
And I make the motion that we go to the third and final reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
No.
Kenneth?
No.
Schottmar?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Okay.
It's left on the second reading, then.
Is that the end of business on this end, or?
Well, I mean, y'all can talk some more on if you want to.
Yeah, sure. Um, I'm not against the, I, I wanna say that I'm not against the intention of the ordinance, but I think that it's going a little too far in terms of its enforcement. Um, I think a seventy-dollar fine is excessive for this vi- uh, for this violation. I'm fine with it being a violation on the books. Um, so I'd like to make a motion for an amendment. This would just add, uh, two sentences at the end of the, of the current section. First, it would say, "The penalty for the first two offenses shall be limited to a warning." And second, we'll say, "The penalty for, uh, an offense should be limited to twenty-five dollars."
Second.
Maybe there's a better way of word that, I'll defer to the attorney.
Since we're leaving it on the second reading, uh, I, I would suggest if you're gonna have different penalties for this particular subsection in this larger section, which is already covered in the penalty provision, that we need to have a brand-new section just for this, so that, uh, we don't get confused that parts, some of this section is punished by one way and some by the other, some have to have warnings and some don't. I'll be happy to work with you, and I would prefer that we just leave it on the second reading, and let me work with Alderman and Petty to bring up, uh, an amendment that would probably be an entirely new, uh, section and not just a part of an existing section where the penalty provision's already spelled out in the code.
It's fine with me, I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you. That's a question, let me have to find that one. Yes?
So you, so, um, the first offense, basically a warning and then twenty-five dollars after that?
The first two offenses?
First two.
Call it a three-strike rule?
Oh. So the first two are warnings?
Yes, sir.
Well, you're gonna be working with the city attorney on this, um, are we? And then the third is twenty-five dollars?
Yes.
Making sure.
Can I ask, I wanted a clarification? So the, is the goal there then to put something together and then give us in the public time before the next meeting to see what it is and?
I think it can go public as soon as the attorney has the draft ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so, maybe this is a question for the attorney. So what happens if, um, that person says, "Well, it's worth twenty-five dollars for me to park here, so I'm just gonna keep parking." What happens on four and five and six and seven?
You don't need to ask me, you need to ask the, uh, the sponsor of, of this.
'Cause I can hear some people saying that. "I need a parking place. I'm gonna park here. I've got twenty-five dollars."
Sure.
So what are we gonna do?
Make the same argument about any amount. I think we'll take a look at paid parking ordinance, or I will, and take an excuse from that.
I doubt that they would on seventy, you know? Seventy's a little more, I mean, at first, I mean, I just think it's amazing that people don't know they're not supposed to park in front of, of mailboxes. I just think it's totally amazing that people feel like it's okay. So, you know, I, I personally think we need to leave it at seventy dollars, but whatever.
Well, we're, we're gonna hold it right here on second ready for two weeks, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll, we'll go through this again, all right? Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, in the next order of business that I have, it's a public hearing that I'm gonna open. Um, a resolution to approve the issuance of not to exceed fifty million dollars. I got it right this time, did you? Public Finance Authority Revenue Bonds and to finance or refinance certain costs of various projects, including the acquisition and renovation of ninety-one, of the ninety-one unit Park Lake Apartments located at seventeen fifty-three East Zion Road, on behalf of American Agapi Foundation Incorporated of San Antonio, Texas. Paul, I believe you have this.
I, uh, I have my composure today, Lionel, so it is fifty million dollars. I was a little taken aback last time. This is a very good project that I'm, um, excited about bringing forward. Uh, what this is, is a project to, uh, do some renovations to the, um, Park Lake Project, Park Lake Apartments, which is up on East Zion Road. It has over ninety units. They serve mostly, uh, low and lower-income families. Uh, this is a bond issue that would be issued by, uh, public authority out of Wisconsin, which has national jurisdiction. Uh, we would no way have any liability for the bonds, they would not be issued in the name of Fayetteville, so therefore, we would have, uh, no responsibilities as far as project fund or the debt service payments back. So, this looks like a very good project for the city of Fayetteville, and, uh, again, I'm happy to bring it forward. We have, uh, Mike Goodwin, any audience tonight, if you have any, uh, particulars or specifics on the project, you will be doing the, uh, project.
And what questions we have in the council on this? Okay? Now, what public comment do we have on this? Okay-do. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Star Van Allen. I am a resident at Park Lake Apartments. I urge the entire council strongly to approve this bond issue. I can give you ninety-one reasons why you should do so. That's the number of tenant, uh, apartments we have. And for many years, the tenants, I've been talking with many of them since I've lived there for many years, they have been very, uh, upset and concerned about the fact that Park Lake Apartments has been, uh, deteriorating over the years, and, uh, there's been no movement to respond to people's requests for repairs to their units, supposedly because there's not enough money to do so. We have eighteen parking, we have eighteen streetlights in the parking lot, only four of them work, um, and it's been that way for a long time. Many residents refuse to go out at night because they are fearful of either stumbling or being accosted. Um, the parking lot is in serious state of disrepair throughout. There are many sections that are under muddy water from curb to curb during heavy rains. Uh, the residents are upset that there are no screens on the outside of their windows, so that when they open up their windows to let in the fresh air, so come in the wasps and, uh, all the bugs and the mosquitoes. Um, many of, uh, residents have made requests for repairs to their units. Some of them are just a matter of inconvenience, some of them are real safety issues that have not been addressed for years. And so I, uh, urge that this bond issue be passed so that these renovations can be made. I can assure, um, uh, American Agapi that if these, uh, repairs are made, if, if the property is restored to its former value, if, uh, uh, requests for resident, uh, repairs are made, that they will certainly have the appreciation and, uh, respect of the, uh, residents for a long time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, very much.
Peter Tonison, thirty-five hundred Hearthstone Drive. I don't have a comment, I, I just have a question. I guess I needed to read more about this. Um, fifty million dollars would work out to five hundred thousand dollars per unit?
Paul, you have?
And, and why is the city even considering this if the city isn't on the bonds? I mean, why is this a public matter? So I just have questions about what's, what's going on here.
Sure. We'll, we'll get those answered for you, Paul.
That's the maximum of a bond issue that the authority can issue. Uh, there will be several projects bonded together, and that holds the transactional costs, uh, down. So it's not just this project, it will be other projects otherwhere in the United States. Two, it's a, it's a federal authorized bond, TEFRA it's called, and in the legislation that the federal government passed, it requires a public hearing in the municipality or locality where the project is being done. So it asks for a public hearing to make sure that that locality generally does not oppose it, uh, and it's a legal requirement. So those are the answers to that question. If there are any more, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Mayor, could the representative come forward that, uh?
Yes, sir.
And here with Paul. I just have one question for him.
Sure.
Sir, I, I guess you heard the tenant's description of some of the problems in that apartment complex now?
Yes, sir.
Now, uh, how much are you planning to spend, uh, on this particular project if these bonds are passed?
Uh, right now, our repairs budget is five hundred and eighty-two thousand.
And will that bring, uh, will that respond to all of the repair items that he was talking about?
Uh, the one that I haven't addressed, but I've got it on the first contingency list is the parking lot lighting. And I didn't put it on there because I have a, uh, local contractor that was supposed to give me a bid to put in, uh, high-efficiency, uh, low-energy lighting. But I do have a contingency in the budget, and if he comes within the contingency and it's there, that, I'm gonna add that as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you.
And the screens, the area about the screens, uh, I'm gonna look at that, maybe beat up on a contractor, because we're gonna change out all the windows and put in sealed double pane, uh, windows on all, throughout the property.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? I'm right back to the council. Yes, Jess?
I just have a quick comment. I, I hope that the council will, uh, join me in, in approval of this. This has, um, been something over the years that has been brought to my attention several times, I've talked to a few of the residents, and, um, I think it's certainly needed. This, uh, particular, uh, apartment complex is very old, and, um, uh, there's not that many, um, apartment complexes over there, and I think that, uh, the, the, the things that they are asking for are completely reasonable. I mean, you, you've gotta have safe lighting in the parking lots, and you've gotta have, um, windows and doors and things like that that, that work properly. So I, I applaud this, and, uh, I thank, uh, everyone for, for, uh, supporting this, because I definitely will, it's much needed over there.
Thank you, Jess. Anybody else? Well?
Will we pass the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and second to pass the resolution. Sondra, would you, uh, please call the robe? Any final comments? Okay? Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, council. Under new business, number one, ordinance approving VAC fifteen dash forty-nine eighty-six submitted by Riverwood Homes LLC, properties located at twenty-nine ninety-one Labradite to vacate portions of an existing utility easement kit.
Whereas the city council has the authority under ACA fourteen fifty-four one oh four to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the city council has determined that the following described portion of the utility easement is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore, be ordained by the city council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following utility easement described in exhibit B attached hereto and made a part hereof. Section two, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with a map attached and labeled exhibit A, shall be filed in the office of recorder of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county. And section three, that this vacation approval is subject to following condition of approval, any damage or relocation of existing facilities and associated new easement dedication shall be at the owner and developer's expense.
Chairman?
This property's located in the Crystal Springs subdivision, which is in west Fayetteville. There are four undeveloped lots within this phase of Crystal Springs, and with a, contains a thirty-five-foot utility easement along their northern, uh, property line. This request is to vacate a portion of that easement along the four lots, uh, leaving a twenty-seven-foot utility easement in its place. There are utilities within that utility easement, thus the condition for any damage or relocation to be at the owner and developer's expense. Um, but all utilities have signed off, and the planning commission voted eight to zero in favor of this request.
Okay, what questions we have in the council? Okay? What public comment do we have on this? Okay, bring it back to the council.
Will we spin the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our business. What announcements do we have? Sarah?
This Thursday evening at six P.M., we'll have a Ward one meeting at the Fayetteville Senior Center.
Ooh. Well?
Monday, April twenty-seventh, six P.M., we'll have a Ward four meeting in room one-eleven of City Hall. Um, it's open to everyone, so hope to have a big turnout.
Mayor, uh, tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, April the twenty-second, the city is celebrating, uh, Earth Day. We have an event called Wild About Earth Day. It's a volunteer event that begins at twelve-thirty and goes until five-thirty. We encourage citizens to come out. Um, we will have a litter cleanup along our trails and wildflower, wildflower planting